This is a demonstration of Wirecast. 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 This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
The meeting of the Harrisburg Planning Commission.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I move in second and all in favor, approving minutes for our next meeting, January 3rd. I think most. So I understand. Basically approved. All right, uh, we see no oil business on our agenda for tonight. We'll move on to new business. First application that we have.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
So, uh, the request is, uh, the applicant's proposing to convert an existing office building into a three-unit multifamily dwelling, which requires zoning hearing board approval of a variance from the density requirements outlined in section seven dash three oh seven.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Uh, the first floor unit accommodates a studio apartment and a proposed, uh, common workspace and fitness area. Um, and the upper floors, uh, each feature one unit. The property at five thirteen North Second Street is a point zero seven acre lot featuring a three-story, four thousand eighty-three square foot structure, which was constructed circa nineteen hundred. The property is bounded by five fifteen North Second Street to the north, Church Street to the east, five eleven North Second Street to the south, and North Second Street to the west. The, this attached.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Elements of the Italianate and commercial storefront architectural styles. Character-defining features include the brick facade, the decorative planting bed with small metal fence below the first floor window, the ornate entrance, the metal cornice above the first floor, the two-story Oriole window on the second and third floors with painted metalwork, the prominent metal cornice with panels and brackets, and the one-story garage with two bays in the rear. The main entryway features a full-view divided-light wooden door set within a wooden paneled frame, flanked by decorative divided-light side lights and topped with a divided-light.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Is accessed by a stone stoop with metal railings. Demonstration also includes windows, uh, in a variety of configurations. The first floor features a fixed-pane wooden window topped with a divided light and flanked by six-over-one wooden windows. There are four six-over-one wooden windows on the second and third floors of the Oriole window. Structure appears to be topped with a flat rubber roof. The detached garage in the rear connected to adjacent structures along Church Street features paneled wooden doors. The building retains a significant amount of its architectural and historic integrity.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
The adjacent property of the north, including the entryway and Oriole windows. As such, the structure contributes significantly to the eclectic and diverse architectural and historic character of the streetscape and neighborhood. Planning Bureau recommend, Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. Uh, the Planning Bureau recommends that the project not incorporate the fitness area and communal workspace on the floor, first floor, as they are seeking to meet a pressing need for more units downtown. Such accommodations should be considered subordinate to the primary need of housing. Uh, any exterior alterations to the building.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Or if necessary, receive harbor approval of a certificate of appropriateness application. And finally, the applicant will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to ensure that the account billing reflects the establishment of the proposed uses on site. Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. Proposed variance from the density regulations represents a de-minimus deviation necessary to allow an otherwise permitted use. The proposed reuse will add new residents to the, to the neighborhood to activate the street on nights and weekends and grow a customer base to support local businesses, and will provide additional units to the downtown housing.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Of former office buildings in the surrounding neighborhood have demonstrated that the proposed use will not adversely impact the character of the neighborhood.
I agree. Please, for example, represent, if you say your name or address.
Yeah, I'm Dave Stuzen with Gem Group, uh, representing, uh, Fernandez Realty, uh, Group. We're located, uh, Gem Group is located at two fourteen Senate Avenue.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Questions I wanted to ask, have you read the, uh, question sheet?
I did not read the report, I just got the notice of the meeting in the mail. I don't personally, uh, it would be a matter of me talking with the owner about it, but I don't think he would object to that. It sounds to me like, uh, he wants to do this as part.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Anything else you would, uh, want to share with the, uh, committee?
No, just, uh, his thanks for considering this, uh, and, uh, he looks forward to doing more business with you.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast. This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
I mean, to me, it looked like it was a communal space for the use of all the residents, uh, because there's no separation between the entrance and then the unit in the back. That separation exists kind of where the, uh, floor plan narrows down there, so it looked like it was for that. Um, and, uh, you know, as noted, um, in their application, they're trying to meet a pressing need for housing, and so feel like housing would be a primary use of that space versus some amenities such as like a fitness center, a workspace, especially considering the presence.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Little Lambs, which is nearby, and then you've got the YMCA right down the street too, so seemed that more space for housing would be a preferable use of the space.
The only comment I would add to that is that there is an entrance to the basement that they wanted to keep open, and that was a way of, of meeting that need. Um, so we would have to reconsider how we get to the basement. Uh, you know, just, uh, the infrastructure for.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Fire protection, the riser will come in there, um, you know, plumbing, hot water heaters, things of that nature.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast. This is a demonstration of Wirecast. This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Yep, sure, uh, so the applicant is proposing to establish a mixed-use project with a hundred and forty-four residential units, twenty-five hundred and ninety square feet of commercial space, and accessory off-street parking lots, which require zoning relief for the proposed use, various aspects of the development standards, and the off-street parking regulations in the zoning code, in the zoning code, including special exception to establish a multifamily dwelling use in the INS district, special exception for relief from thirty-one of the.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Special exception to increase the impervious lot coverage from eighty-two point two percent of the property to eighty-six percent of the property, special exception, uh, to allow a zero-foot front yard setback along Riley Street, a special exception to expand the accessory parking lots located at fifteen eleven North Third Street and fifteen thirty North Fourth Street, a variance for relief from fifteen point six feet of the required twenty-foot rear yard setback along the Boyd Street Urban Meadow, and finally, a variance to allow parking in a setback along, uh, the Boyd Street Urban Meadow for fifteen thirty.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Bureau notes that, uh, multiple zoning relief requests, some identical to current requests, were previously approved by the Planning Commission Zoning Hearing Board in October twenty twenty-one for this project. Uh, however, given that a land development plan was not subsequently filed for this project, or subsequently filed, the granted zoning relief was automatically revoked per section seven dash three twenty-three point five H of the zoning code. Current application is similar to the previous proposal, although there are some substantive differences, most notably the removal of the proposed subsurface parking facilities at three twenty Riley Street and the related accommodation of accessory off-street.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Eleven North Third Street and fifteen thirty North Fourth Street. Formal integration of these parking areas into the project site increases the number of parking spaces provided for the project. Additionally, the new proposal reduces the number of residential units from a hundred and fifty-five to a hundred and forty-four, and reduces the commercial space from three thousand square feet to twenty-five hundred and ninety square feet. Beyond the integration of the parking lots into the project and a slight reduction in the scope of the residential and commercial space, the proposal remains largely similar to the previous iteration. Uh, three twenty Riley Street is comprised of.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Twenty-two separate parcels and a small right-of-way totaling approximately one point zero one acres. The small right-of-way was vacated in October twenty twenty. The site is currently in approximately one hundred and seventeen space accessory parking lot with minor landscaping improvements along the east, south, and west boundaries. Though the Planning Bureau notes that the lot appears to be sparsely used owing to the fact that spaces are reserved for students and faculty of the Hack Midtown campus, whose footprint has shrunk dramatically in the past few years, resulting in less use. The northern boundary of the lot also features some landscaping and improvements.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Site is bounded by the Boyd Street Urban Meadow to the north, North Fourth Street to the east, Riley Street to the south, and Logan Street to the west. Fifteen eleven North Third Street is comprised of a single parcel totaling point five seven acres in size. Site is currently occupied by an accessory parking lot with minor landscaping improvements along the north and south property boundaries. Site is accessed by curb cuts along Riley Street and North Third Street. The site is bounded by the Boyd Street Urban Meadow and fifteen nineteen North Third Street to the north, Logan Street to the east, Riley Street and three ten, three hundred and three ten.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Third Street to the west. Fifteen thirty North Fourth Street is comprised, comprised of, uh, twelve different parcels, I think they actually have been consolidated, um, totaling approximately one acre. Site is currently occupied by an approximately fifty-space accessory parking lot bordering an unimproved gravel lot that is utilized as informal parking and currently as a construction staging area for infrastructure work along North Fourth Street. The site is bounded by Harris Street to the north, North Fourth Street to the east, the Boyd Street Urban Meadow to the south, and Logan Street to the west.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. If granted approval for the requested zoning relief, the applicant will file a law consolidation subdivision and land development plan application for the proposed mixed-use development. This application will be accompanied by a traffic impact study and photometric plan that analyzes the effect of the proposed development on the surrounding community. The applicant will vacate the portion of Logan Street between Riley Street and the Boyd Street Urban Meadow. They should also, they should also consider vacating the portion of Logan Street between the Boyd Street Urban Meadow and Harris Street and potentially consolidate.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
That right-of-way cannot accommodate the traffic, the two-way traffic movements as proposed in the site plan. Um, and in further conversations with the applicants, they have revised that site plan so that it's just, um, one-way out egress, uh, onto that stretch of Boyd Street. Uh, the applicant will ensure that any future businesses proposed for the first-floor commercial space will either conform to the zoning code, or if not, the applicant will ensure the necessary zoning relief applications are filed and approval received from the zoning hearing board. The applicant will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to confirm the appropriate size.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
To ensure that city vehicles can access the refuse storage location. Uh, the applicant will coordinate with the city arborist on the selection and location of trees on the property site, although some trees will likely be lost along the Boyd Street Urban Meadow, they should be retained where feasible and replaced at least one-to-one elsewhere on the project site or in the surrounding rights-of-way. The applicant will coordinate with the Planning Bureau on the number and location of bike racks around the site. The Bureau would recommend that the applicant consider both a secure indoor bike storage area for residents and employees of the businesses on site, as well as publicly accessible.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Furthermore, the applicant should consider incorporating a Susqua cycle bike share station. Uh, the, and finally, the Planning Bureau recommends that the applicant retain flexibility in respect to the use and development of fifteen thirty North Fourth Street, and shall explore potential development opportunities beyond the proposed use of an accessory parking lot. Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. Proposed project, uh, the project proposes infill development that reflects the character of the existing and proposed development along the Riley Street and Sixth Street corridors in terms of building, massing, use, and design.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Corridor, corridors, uh, specifically Third Street, Riley Street, and Sixth Street, to realize the potential of the project site, and will be designed with primary frontages along Riley Street and Fourth Street to mitigate impacts on the neighborhood to the north. Uh, compared to the previously approved iteration of the project, this version is less intensive in terms of residential density and commercial space, and will provide more off-street parking than previously proposed, thus reducing potential impacts on the surrounding community. And finally, the project will bring significant benefits to the neighborhood, including the development of.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
For, for housing units that are in demand in the city generally and the neighborhood specifically. The activation of the Boyd Street Urban Meadow, the improvement of pedestrian infrastructure, better streetscapes and urban design, and expanding the customer base for existing and future businesses in the community.
Yes, good evening, Scott DeBau with KCI Technologies, I was a site civil engineer for the applicant.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
No more agreement.
It's been some time since we saw this, uh, I guess the primary change is in the parking.
Um, and the minor reduction in the intensity of the commercial residential components, yeah. Uh, I believe eleven, let's see.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
It might be far too early to know this, but is there any plan or conception of the kinds of businesses that would be, uh, in the, um, development?
I think it's, I think it's too, too early at, at the moment. Like we stated, it was just over like twenty-five hundred square feet, so it's not significant, so something retail, commercial, coffee shop, something of that nature, but nothing has been determined at this point.
Sure, uh, thank you, and, um, it's, it looks like, and I wasn't here at the time.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Approved iteration of this, and so when, um, Jeff was talking about the, uh, the main differences, we're just talking about basically less units, and then there's a change to a, a parking element?
That's exactly correct, yeah, yeah, a reduction in the number of units, and the previous one had a subsurface parking garage, um, that's been replaced for the lot to the north, um, which gets us a greater percentage of the, of the parking spaces.
Thank, I, as a nearby resident, I think.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
I have no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
What do you look at as far as, uh, racks? Uh, first, I, I assume these are part of our.
Yes.
Market?
No, it is.
Sure, sure, I'm Dominic Wicker, I'm, uh, with Washington Place Equities, who are, uh, one of the developers.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
So, you know, I mean, I think it's pretty consistent with what we're seeing in the market now, and obviously, since, um, we were here last, uh, the market has only, you know, gotten better. Um, interest rates and construction costs have gotten worse, but, um, you know, we'll take it what we get, so. But yeah, it'd be all mark, our, all market rate.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
You know, I think it wasn't reflected in, in just the, the massing, but we went from a five-story building down to a four-story building, um, you know, and, uh, sort of looked, re-looked at the parking from subsurface to surface. Um, it really was just trying to wrestle the project economics into a place where it could work, so.
This is a masonry podium.
Masonry, correct, yeah, we're, we're expecting masonry podium and then, you know, frame construction on top.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast. This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
I do have a question. What's the mixture of one or two bedroom units?
Um. Off here, it's probably, don't hold me to this exactly, I can get this to you direct. Do we have it on there?
I'll just see.
Usually, we're in the probably seventy-five percent ones and twenty, twenty, twenty-five percent twos, um, yes, I think that's probably pretty close, I can, I'm happy to follow up through Jeff or whoever to get the exact numbers.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast. This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Um, I believe that area is now covered by Friends of Midtown, they've, I believe, merged with, uh, Midtown Action Council, which occupied a smaller footprint, uh, in Midtown. Um, but, you know, I can certainly think that's something that the Planning Commission can recommend the applicants, um, do before bringing the land development plan, uh, before, um, themselves and City Council.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast. This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
I would move to approve with the conditions. Well, that's pretty good. Moved and seconded with the, uh, conditions as noted by staff, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
All right, good luck on things. Okay, the third item for tonight's action is a variance application for nineteen oh one North Second Street, or Sixth Street, rather, zone.
zone Commercial General CG and Commercial Neighborhood CN filed by Bill McKelvey with Catherine.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Wall sign and a 32-foot freestanding sign where one is not permitted per the 325-6 of the zoning code.
So, the applicant is proposing to install a wall sign of 44 square feet on-site, which is larger than permitted by right in the CN District, which is 25-square-foot limitation, and to install 32-square-foot freestanding sign in the CN District where none are permitted by right. The property is unique in that it features a split zoning designation with a majority of the site comprised of.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
CG District and a portion, the block of Buddy North Sixth Street in the CN District. All signage included in this application is located north in the CN District. As a follow-up, I'd note that the applicants do have a zoning appeal filed with respect to the classification of the freestanding sign as being not exempt from the zoning code, which was initial determination of the planning bureau. Going through and reading through the documentation.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
The planning bureau does concur with the applicants that the signage as proposed would not be considered commercial signage and therefore would be exempt from the zoning code. But we do have a recommendation in our, in the recommendation, we have a condition in the recommendation that addresses it. So I just wanted to clarify that before getting further on here. So the property at 1901 North Sixth Street was recently consolidated into a single 3.44 acre lot.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
The project site was comprised of 18 parcels and rights-of-way. Site is currently under construction with the final development featuring a two-story structure of approximately 33,000 square feet. Catherine Hershey School for Early Learning. Project site is generally bounded by Pepper Street to the north, North Seventh Street to the east, Minnick Street to the south, and North Sixth Street to the west. The planning bureau staff recommends that the request be approved with the following conditions. While the planning bureau concurs with the applicant's position that the.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Sixth Street is exempt from the regulations in Chapter 7-325 of the zoning code. The bureau believes it should be resized to the 25-square-feet, square feet permitted for wall signage in the CN District to ensure that such commercial, non-commercial signage generally conforms to standards for signs otherwise permitted in the CN District. Planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following reasons. The site is unique in that it is split between the CN and CG zoning districts, thus making different portions of the site.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
And if the proposed signage was located on a building elevation located in the CG District, the signage would be permitted by right. Given the size of the building, of the front building elevations and the configuration of the project site, signage designed in exact conformance with the zoning code would most likely not be visible or be illegible from North Sixth Street. And finally, the proposal is similar in size to wall signage to other institutional and commercial buildings in the corridor. To the planning bureau's knowledge, these have not created adverse impacts for other properties.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
There will be negligible impacts on the surrounding properties and neighborhood.
Thank you, Jeff. If you could identify yourself and your connection to the project?
Good evening. I'm Scott Dietrich. I'm the attorney for Catherine Hershey Schools for Early Learning. And this is Bill McKelvey, who is the facilities manager for Catherine Hershey Schools. If you'd like, Bill has some larger pictures showing the site as well as the proposed signage.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast. This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
You've had a chance to look through the materials most certainly. Do you have any comments relative to staff's recommendations?
Yes, sir. First, we appreciate their interpretation that these are non-commercial signs and therefore exempt from the signage statute. We would also, however, still request that they exceed the size of the 25-square feet. If you can see on the site plan, there's quite a bit of distance from.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Of the children. And it would be, and also, it is a corner lot, so it needs to be visible from both North Sixth Street and Minnick Street. So, the signage itself, as you can see the distance in the shots that were taken from the, from the street, it's, if we made the sign, that sign right there is 44 square feet. If it was reduced to 25 square feet, it would barely be visible at all. And that, we think it's important.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
That is. It's a new building in the area. Catherine Hershey Schools believes it's bringing a lot of value to, to the city of Harrisburg and certainly wants people to be aware that that is the building. Second, the sculpture is just slightly larger. It's at 32 square feet from what we could measure. And as you can see, that same sculpture is used at all of their facilities. Harrisburg being the second facility that they're opening, but there will be more. And they would like to keep that consistent throughout all their facilities.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
That is, it is not offensive. It's a de minimis, exceeding the 25-square-foot amount by only seven square feet. And it also adds, I think, to the beauty of the site. It's a very attractive sculpture and it's very popular with the children and the parents. So we would like to request that the signs be granted and approved as is.
And just to clarify, the planning bureau's condition would have only been.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
We were supportive of the 44-square-foot. We just felt that with the freestanding sign, it could kind of be considered a loophole. Like you could theoretically build a 200-square-foot one if it's exempt from the zoning code. And so, we felt that it was reasonable to apply some standard. And in looking at standards, we kind of looked at other signage permitted, you know, in the CN District as a way to establish that baseline.
It's our only response. It's a work, it's a piece of art.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
And it would be very difficult to downsize that by seven square feet.
Yeah, what does, what does our zoning code say about artwork?
I mean, artwork, I would say is.
Quiet on that.
Probably not relative. The question becomes, is a logo of a company or an entity signage or art? Like if you had the golden arches from McDonald's, you know, if this is their logo that they say is attached to all of their properties.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
You had the golden arches, but you let McDonald's like build a 200-square-foot one there and claim it's art and not sign. I think, and, you know, obviously, this is a very gray area. And I think, you know, there may be some sort of precedent for the city established in whatever the determination of the zoning hearing board is in this case. So, you know, I think we're trying to maybe put some guardrails on that as far as our approach to this.
And I appreciate, we've constantly been trying to deal with the issue of precedent.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
We typically have tried to make it work because there are obviously a different size structure here than once was on this site. I mean, what was it, 50, 50 parcels or whatever it was? So, with that, move over to questions, starting on extreme left.
Just to clarifying one, so, and maybe this is for, a question for Jeff. So, was my understanding that the condition that's suggested.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Correct. Okay, so the wall sign, we would, if we approved, there would be no condition about that. It would be, it's for the, the sort of the freestanding, the flowers.
Freestanding signs, sculpture, however it's defined, yeah.
And that is, okay, thank you. That was my only question.
And to be frank, as well, we're not really sure what the exact square footage is of this sculpture since it's kind of hard to, hard to measure.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
It isn't overly large if you, if you view it from, from out on, on Minnick Street, which is where it faces.
Jamie?
I have new questions.
Okay, Sean?
Yeah, well, I've always felt that our signage limitations on design, there's only a couple of years separate. So, I'd have probably one of the 32 square feet. And I think the better way to approach it is saying that, treat it as a sign and we're going to grant various, as opposed to saying, well, this is really art and exempt.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
And that was our original approach to it. I mean, I think the applicants had a different approach. And, you know, I think we gave it, gave it some thought, thought about how maybe we've approached other similar requests in the past, how we might approach a similar request in the future and whether we felt, you know, their argument had merit or not. I, you know, at the end of the day, I think we, I agreed that, that the signage probably did not fall under signage that's regulated by the zoning code.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Right, yeah.
Some very creative sign companies are sitting here.
I think my fellow commissioners are very smart and observant. So I, I kind of concur with what Commissioner Ltoo was saying there. But I would also agree about removing the condition for the 25-square-foot.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
It's a bit more of an interactive piece. Well, I do understand the logo bit, and that's a really good point. It's still also sort of this interactive, right? Like you, you see this in other businesses' settings, right? Where you want people to take pictures with it, things like that, right? So it's too, I think it's too inappropriate scale when that's like what you're going after, so. That's it.
Having no other questions from the commissioners? Anyone, I guess we've only left with the right-hand side here?
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Do I have a motion?
I would motion to approve with no conditions. No, there's just the one, and it's to have the freestanding sign be 25-square-feet. So I, I'm, yeah, the other one's not in question. So I'm putting a motion out there to approve with no conditions.
A second.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
May I? Opposed? Thank you very much. When does it open? Okay, moving on, item four, I believe it is, yes. Street vacation application.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Fourth Street, in the block bounded by Clinton Street, North Fourth Street, Harris and Logan. Zone residential medium-density RM filed by Chris Rice with Midtown Redevelopment LLC on behalf of Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority, the owner to vacate various rights-of-way, versus alleys in order to effectuate consolidation and development on the block. Jeff?
And I don't know whether the planning commission wants to kind of review these both concurrently. They're related. This is the street vacation.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Development plan that is also being heard at tonight's meeting. So, if it's okay with the planning commission, I'll just read them kind of back-to-back.
Read through both.
And then you can have the discussion be for both cases. So for the street vacation, the applicant is requesting to vacate various rights-of-way within the block bounded by Clinton Street, North Fourth Street, Harris Street, and Logan Street to effectuate the consolidation and development of the site with a mixed-use building featuring 36 dwelling units, associated commercial space, and accompanying site and access improvements. The .47.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Lot is comprised of 19 vacant parcels, private alleyways, and a public right-of-way known as Ike Alley, totaling approximately .47 acres. The project site is generally bounded by Clinton Street to the north, North Fourth Street to the east. The property is at 328-352 Harris Street to the south and Logan Street to the west. The applicant is proposing to vacate Ike Alley, running from Clinton Street in the north to 1608 North Fourth Street to the east, and small connected rights-of-way running internally through the block. The planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
The applicant will execute easement agreements with those providers to allow access to and maintenance of existing infrastructure running through or along the rights-of-way, or will have such infrastructure formally abandoned. And the applicant will hold at least two community meetings, community outreach sessions for the proposed street vacations as outlined in Chapter 9, 117.4F of the Harrisburg City Code, and will provide documentation regarding notification and attendance of meetings. Planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. The existing rights-of-way are essentially paper streets.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
General vehicular circulation, traffic. As such, the vacation will not have any impact on traffic circulation. And the proposed street vacation will permit the subsequent lock consolidation of properties on-site, thereby allowing eventual development as shown in the associated land development plan that will provide a variety of benefits to the neighborhood and the city overall. With respect to the lock consolidation and land development plan, the applicant proposes to consolidate the 19 vacant lots on-site to construct a four-story.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
First-floor commercial space with related site and access improvements. It is the same property description. So the planning bureau staff recommends that the request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant will provide a formal photometric plan to confirm consistency with the environmental performance standards in Chapter 7-331 of the zoning code. The applicant will install a varied facade treatment similar to that submitted with the current application documentation. And I believe the commissioners, that was in your packet.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Curb cuts will be revised to feature driveway access points as opposed to the current street access designs. The applicants will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to confirm the appropriate size and location of refuse collection on-site and update the billing accounts to reflect the new use. The applicant will coordinate with the city arborist on the species of trees and the installation of appropriately-sized and located tree pits. And finally, the planning bureau recommends that the applicant consider incorporating community benefits on the properties through which an access walkway will run at 332 and 334 Harris Street.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Infrastructure catchments or native pollinator plants. Planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. The applicant has received approval from the zoning hearing board for the various relief requests needed to effectuate the project as proposed and has concurrently submitted the street vacation application necessary to consolidate the lots. Approval of the proposal will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, which features other mixed-use and medium-density apartments, and will bring benefits by developing long vacant lots.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Driver needs by installing and improving sidewalks, incorporating bike storage, and providing sufficient off-street parking for residents. The proposed project will provide much-needed senior housing units for the community while increasing the customer base for nearby local businesses and providing space for small businesses. The proposed project will have a minimal impact on the existing off-street parking supply given that one off-street parking space will be provided for each proposed unit with available guest spaces on-site. And finally, the proposal will add new residents to the neighborhood and activate the street and surrounding community on nights and weekends and contribute to.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
That was a mouthful, right?
Yeah.
Could you identify yourselves in your relation to the project, please?
Yep, Matt Long with Midtown Redevelopment.
Dan Wise with RJ Fisher, site designer.
You've heard the, I guess we will take these one by one for voting purposes. But I'll start with the street vacation. Or it's not the street vacation, it's the other one, right? No, it is the street vacation first, yeah.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Recommendations or anything in staff report?
No, we agree with them.
Okay. As we look at the preliminary final with the conditions and notes by staff, any comments or questions?
No, the only thing I would note is, after speaking with Jeffrey on Sunday, he did give farther feedback on the elevations for the one condition there. And if you'd like a copy, I can bring these up now. We updated them per Jeff's.
This is a demonstration of Wirecast. This is a demonstration of Wirecast.
Is this, this seems to be relatively similar to what we had in our packet?
Yeah, the, what was removed essentially was there kind of like, there was like boxes around the windows previously. So this has a consistent facade treatment across the whole elevation.
If, on the plans I handed here, it's the page prior is what you have in your packet. And then the last page from Jeff's notes over the weekend.
This is a demonstration. This is a demonstration of wirecast.
All right, questions by commissioners, I'll start on the left. On either, on either petition?
No, my question's answered right here.
All right, right there, okay. Anne?
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
Yes, we're in agreeance with them, I just wanted to-
For both of them?
Correct, yes.
I missed that part, I thought we were only talking about the street vacation.
Yeah, I just wanted to address the elevations because it's more the conditions.
Not either one? Yeah, I think it's a good project. Again, I would echo Planning Staff's-
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
...elevations and making sure that we do get something, when it comes into us, it's as well-detailed as possible. We do see some pretty impressive things. It really helps us to understand it from street level, you know, and in perspectives as opposed to just a flat elevation, so. For, you know, for what that's worth would be my comment on it anyways. Anyone in the audience, I see one person left, I imagine you're supporting the project?
Yes.
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
All right, with, with that said, any further discussions or comments? Nope, that's good. Well, then first, I would look for a motion relative to the street vacation application as presented with, did we have conditions on that or don't? Did we have, didn't we?
Their general conditions is just related to like utilities, making sure that if there's anything underground, they take care of that with the utility provider for the most part.
Yeah, utilities and-
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
I move to approve with the conditions as stated.
All right, moved and seconded on the street vacation application, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay. One comment I'd have on the next one, and maybe it's implied, is this, the vacation application still needs to go through council, I think can be made official.
Correct.
So, that would probably be a condition-
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
That it has to go through council?
That it, that we, they do receive the street vacation, it's successful.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah.
It just seems like it's maybe over-technical, but-
No, I think, I mean, we usually tie these things together. If that didn't happen, I think it makes sense to add that as a condition.
All right, any other questions or concerns on this one? Nope, all right. All in favor?
Who moved?
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
I'll move to approve it, and with that additional, you know, as long as the other ones approved too.
Any other conditions as noted here?
Second.
Okay, we have moved and seconded with the conditions as noted, which are seven. There were six, we added one. All in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Thank you.
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
I noticed that, I don't know if you noticed, but in the land development plan review, I included the, incorporated the conference of plan, a little section on that, so that's something I want to start bringing into, at the very least, the land development plans. I don't, maybe some of the more intensive zoning relief requests too, like three-twenty Riley Street, just didn't have the time to do that for this month, but that'll be a feature of the case reports going forward. So, again, making sure that we're-
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
...doing, reviewing plans. We are working on getting Comp Plan story maps up, to have something on our website, actually. What's that?
Comp Plan what?
Uh, chapter story maps.
Oh, story maps.
So, yeah, that, which is, I know, something we've been meaning to work on, and we were really starting to make some good headway before, before we lost Mac. So, I think that'll obviously push us back a little bit, but we do have a GIS administrator, a new GIS administrator on staff with the city, and I'm hoping-
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
...so that, you know, we may have like a beta version up first to have you guys take a look at and just see what we're working with, and hopefully have that up and active and available to the public at some time, late spring.
Speaking, congratulations, we're getting there.
Yep.
What was, I'm, I'm trying to remember, maybe Sean, you remember, Anne, when did we finally adopt, or did council finally adopt the Comp Plan?
I think it was November twenty-twenty-one.
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
It was, it was at the end of the year, yeah.
Well, we started in twenty-fourteen. I was starting to do five-year increments in my head there, you know.
We started in two thousand fourteen.
We did.
Seriously.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I think, I think this, I mean, that was when we kicked off the RFPs, RFEI selection process, but I think the, I think the document we have now is, yeah, is much more-
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
...easily to like access and change parts of it, instead of doing like full overhaul like we did with the last one. Obviously, the last one had been in nineteen seventy-four, and it just wasn't in a format that lets you maybe kind of update certain parts or take them away or add little parts, which the new document kind of does. So, you know, if it's, if the case where we make, after five years of it being an adopted plan, look at it and say, what are we doing right? And we're working on a tracking sheet too, where we have each of these, where I'm going to start circulating that around to-
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
Kind of ask them, hey, which of these things have you done, and start filling it in. And then, it's got like the different years in the columns, so that we can see maybe what parts of the plan we're doing better at, which we're not doing better at, maybe what departments we need to work at with a little bit more. But we are trying to get that together, and hopefully, around the same time we have the story maps, we'll have something to put out to all of you, so you can see. And I have to go back to twenty-twenty-two, because we've been doing stuff with this since then.
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
...a patch master plan and stuff like that. So, you guys will be able to see, it's not just like starting from now, it's like we've been doing stuff and, and be able to see exactly, like I said, where we've been having some successes and where we still need to, you know, put a little bit more effort into.
Yeah, I know, I've, I've been dealing with a couple of planning commissions, and I know two of them at least are doing an annual report, or having staff provide a, you know, what happened with, you know-
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
...the Comp Plan, interact with those.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what this tracking worksheet is supposed to do, is it'll give us a-
It sounds like you're heading that direction.
Yeah, at the end of the year, be like, we've got, I don't know, something like five hundred goals, objectives, and action items throughout the plan. We'll be able to say, we've done a little something with two hundred of them. You know, we'll give, at least be able to give you some like hard numbers and maybe fill it out with some more qualitative discussion of what we've been doing.
Yeah, and the whole purpose is to make it a living document.
Right.
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
With, with all your staffing changes and everything, you have all the different hats you wear, is there anything we can be doing to make your life easier at this point? When it comes to-
You know, it would be really great to go to digital packets, because we do spend a lot of time, like, you know, printing stuff out and delivering them, you know, getting those out the door. Especially if it's like on a Friday or something like that, can be a little tricky sometimes.
Is there a way-
Well, I think, I think there's something to that, but the question becomes-
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
Well, we, we now will have the, you know, thanks to the update, upgrade project that Communications did last year, we have these. So, if we're able to do something, and you know, it's kind of a save the environment, we're using a lot of paper here for these meetings. So, I think that would be, you know, good, something that would be helpful, but I'll still-
How do we, how do we make that work, I guess?
Yeah, so how would we-
We're not seeing what you're seeing behind us, so.
So, I'll have to work with Communications and-
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
...have a computer here, myself, to like flip through things, so.
Yeah, it's kind of bad tonight.
If we ever want to, you know, individual has a question, we're trying to look at a plan, you want to pull up a sheet, like, why, I mean, I have to go to you inside page, Jeff, can you pull this up on the screen?
That is a little-
You have a paper copy to know what to pull up on the screen.
Yeah.
That is a little over my head technology-wise.
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
I imagine it would probably be focused on any visuals, like you wouldn't have the case report up there, for example. But, you know, we'd maybe have like a slideshow, so we could like flip easily back and forth through things. Like, we might have like conditions at the front, first slide, in case people wanted us to go back or whatever, so the applicants could see that. And then have like the visuals that we have in the packets and on the digital packets online up there too, so that you'd still be able to like-
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
I, I don't know. Again, I'm not even sure how it would work on my end right now, but I'm sure there's a way. What's that? It really- Honestly, honestly, it probably wouldn't be that much work. If I'm just like putting pictures down and just doing like bullet points of stuff, like, it would not be, I don't think it'd be intensive, but you'd be like, I mean, you can just like copy a PDF into a slide.
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
I don't think it would actually be that much work, and maybe, I'm getting over my skis on it a little bit by saying that. But, you know, I'll work with the communication department, and if it does look like it's going to be a big lift, maybe there'll just be a picture of the project up there, so that there was something to look at, or existing conditions photos or something, it'd be like two slides. But we'll figure out, you know, I think a way to, you know, more effectively use the technology we now have at our disposal.
I know, I for one, I'd rather not get into printing eleven-by-seven things.
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
I would not be into that, but, you know.
Or, or it could be the case where, and I do this with HARB, where I have some like packet information that I bring to the meetings, so they have that in front of them at the meeting, even though I don't deliver the hard copy packets to them ahead of time.
No, I, I deal with a lot of school boards, and a lot of them have gone to Board Docs, which is a, everybody gets either an iPad or Chromebook at their station. And it goes up on the screen, and they have the ability to interact with it.
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
I mean, what's, you know, for what we've gone through, you know, five, six iPads or Chromebooks, you know, that are wireless to go along with, that might not be a bad, terrible package. I don't think it would take long. When you figure labor, printing costs over the course of the year, we'd probably pay for them in the year eighteen months.
Yeah.
Exactly, it would be for everyone.
Because when, when you send around the, or well, not even when you send around, when the agenda-
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
...to these packets.
Yeah, basically, everything you've got here, that's online.
Maybe, no, so basically, maybe there's some stuff that, okay, that's what I was thinking. I wasn't thinking, yeah, I don't have the capacity to print like a, a thing, but if, you know, you know, I think last time I brought like a laptop and I just had it all, and I, I'm a little bit more easy, it's easy to navigate that way, I was thinking. So, I'm sure it's doable, maybe it's just, and, you know, it was a question for you, so it's totally up to you, but I-
But I think there's something here that, but I think the reason change-
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
...cover this whole technology, and somebody, you're doing two people's job for three months.
Yeah, yeah. Few more than that, yeah, but, well, you know, like I said, it's something I can work out with our IT or communications and see if they can do something. And if not, we can, if not, we can figure out a way to, to use what we have here. And I'll think of some other things, but I really can't think of too much you guys can do in your end, and, and I really think-
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
...streamlining things within the department, and so I feel like we'll be okay, as long as we don't have like any massive agendas for both like this and HARB at the same time. That'll get a little tricky. Well, I guess I'm, you know, I'm kind of the historic preservation specialist, the deputy director slash zoning administrator, and do what I do, and then I'm the floodplain administrator too, so. That's me too, yeah.
This is a demonstration of wirecast.
So, doing all that at the minute, but, you know, we've got the positions posted, and fingers crossed we get someone in soon. Second?
This is a demonstration of wirecast.